Hey, I call the regular meeting of the Nevada City Council to order Monday, August 12th, 2024, 6 o'clock PM. We do have a new system this evening, so bear with us as we work through it for the first time. Can we get a roll call, please?
Melissa Musick.
Here.
Henry Corbin.
Here.
Dane Nielsen.
Here.
Jason Sampson.
Here.
Steve Skaggs.
Here.
Sandy Eric.
Here.
First item is approval of the agenda.
Move to approve.
Second.
Dane.
Jason.
Jason. Any discussion on agenda? Seeing none, council, please vote. Here's the motion passes? Or are you downloading it now? Okay, motion passes. So that takes us into the public hearings. There's a public hearing for the micro enterprise grant review. We will open the public hearing. Did we receive any written or oral comment? No comment received? Is there anyone here to speak in the public hearing? And we'll have you go to the podium and state your name and address for the record.
Good evening. I'm Alex Foley, Region 12, Council of Governments. I have a little statement prepared for the status of funded activities for the micro enterprise project. Pursuant to the citizen participation requirements of Section 508 of the Housing Act of 1987 as amended, Nevada, Iowa, as a recipient of CDBG funds must hold a public hearing in the status of its funded activity. During the course of public hearing, review of the following was presented. Nevada CDBG micro enterprise assistance project provided financial assistance to micro enterprises within the city of Nevada due to the COVID-19 pandemic. To date, $34,112 has been expended, of which $27,254 have been requested from CDBG. The project is approximately 25% financially complete. Two businesses have completed their projects, Meyer Chiropractic at 1129 Sixth Street and Great Plains Millwork at 1207 West Lincoln Highway, both in Nevada. The remaining two businesses have projects outstanding, Felton Properties at 1105 Sixth Street, and Distick Photography at 1105 Sixth Street Suite 101, both in Nevada again. The CBG budget and scope of work has changed since the project application was submitted. The original budget of the project was $279,962 with $188,617 in CDBG funds and $91,345 in match. Due to two businesses dropping out of the project, the budget has been amended to $140,631.48 with $117,326 in CDBG funds and $23,305.48 in match. The city is eligible for CDBG CV funds because of each business involved as a micro enterprise and that the owner of the business is an LMI individual or has created LMI jobs as a result of the project. Documents are available at City Hall.
Council, anything for Mr. Foley?
Thank you for your time.
Is there anyone else here for the public hearing? Seeing none, we will close the public hearing. And then, are you here to speak on the micro enterprise grants? Okay, that'll be a little bit later. Louis will call on you. So now we're... So there's the letter. Do we have to approve that with an action item?
No.
Okay, so we're good?
Yes.
Okay. So then that takes us to consent agenda. Any item may be removed for separate consideration.
Move for approval.
Second.
Sandy and Steve. Seeing no discussion, council, please vote. And once they transition voting to the new system, it won't be as clunky.
Approved.
And is that the new one?
Yes.
Okay, so motion passes, taking us to the public forum. Time set aside for comments from the public on topics of city business other than those listed on the agenda. No action may be taken. Please keep your comments to five minutes or less. And Louis, if you'd like to go forward. Why don't you go up to the microphone, Louis?
I propose to ask questions. Okay. On H Street and K Avenue, I mean, that hasn't got done yet. And I think you said it must have been like two weeks ago. She told me a week. Well, it should have been done and they done yet. It should have been done. And... And then... Up by Dollar General. It's all about this, so-so. Out there two places and it should be fixed. Because somebody could wreck a shock or do a little bit of car damage that doesn't get fixed. It's out by Dollar General in the parking lot.
It's in the... of the old one or the new one?
The old one. The old one, and it's pretty bad. It should be fixed.
Is that something that you've addressed with Dollar General?
Oh, I don't know. They asked me about it. And I said, I'll talk to you guys. Somebody should take care of that. This is pretty bad.
Okay, we can ask staff to take a note of that concern.
It is. And then where the old Ben Franklin used to be? That would be a perfect place to have clothes, to sell pants, shirts, and so forth. You know, I said go to A's, but that'd be a perfect place to sell pants and shirts and clothes. This is a big store. Have you anything what it's gonna be?
In where?
Ben Franklin. The old Ben Franklin.
And we have one of the folks here from that building, so they can listen to your suggestion.
Okay. And to me, I always ask you this question before. Because concrete lasts longer, a lot longer than asphalt. H Street there, it's a H Street to the right. That concrete been there for probably 20 years at least. It's been a long time. It has not cracked or nothing yet. And that's a long time. I know at least 20 years or 30 years. Because concrete lasts longer than asphalt, a long time. Because asphalt, when it gets hot, it cracks. And concrete doesn't. Do you agree with me or disagree?
They do handle weather differently, and it depends on the project and so...
I'm talking about general weather. Concrete lasts longer than asphalt. Generally, any kind of weather. Concrete lasts longer than asphalt by a long shot. That's what I got to say. No. Talk about...
Thanks, Louis. Continuing on in the public forum, is there anyone else here to speak in the public forum? Is yours about the shed, the storage units? Well, I'll call on you, sir, when we get to that item of business, but I do have your card for that. Anyone else here for this section, which is items not on the agenda? And we'll close public forum, moving to Old Business A, which is ordinance number 1057, 2024, 2025, and ordinance amending Chapter 65 stopper yield required of the city code to require stops and additional intersections. Second reading.
Move to approve.
Second.
Steve, Sandy. Discussion on that. Okay, seeing none, council, please vote. Okay, motion is approved.
Yes.
And that takes us to B, ordinance number 1058, 2024, 2025, and ordinance amending Chapter 51, Junk, Junk Vehicles and Machinery of the City Code by adding language pertaining to shipping and storage containers. Second reading. And so that's the one, sir, if you'd like to make your way to the microphone and state your name and address for the record.
Ken Jones, 205 J Avenue here in Nevada. My question about the ordinance is that I don't have a problem with it. It's just that in the language, it doesn't have anything for allowance of time to remove existing shipping containers. Mine's been there for over 20 years. So as it reads, I would have 10 to 15 days to remove that before being held liable through the city council.
Breaking the ordinance.
Yes.
Yeah.
So there is actually language under 5105 of that ordinance that gives property owners until July 1 of 2026, if there are existing shipping containers on the property.
5105, now I didn't get any part of that on this ordinance sheet.
It's in the... do you have the copy of the draft?
I have the 5101.
You have, if you go down to 5105, do you have that part of it?
It was something we added in after the last meeting.
Yeah.
We didn't want to put that burden on our citizens to have to turn around and get rid of them right away.
But I see nothing in here for that date of 2026 on 5105.
That might be an older version that you have, so we updated it after the last meeting.
Are you able to put it up there?
It's at the bottom of the fifth page. I don't know how many pages you've got there, but...
I can provide my copy for you.
Okay, that's fine. I have 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, and at the bottom it's 5106. And at no point in this one still states a date of 2026.
When we added it here.
Okay.
So you can have that.
Okay. Well, that was my only concern, because with the 30-day or 15-day, there's no way possible.
Yeah, at the last meeting, Ryan actually brought it up that it might be a good idea to allow people to...
And that's the only concern I had. It was intended to be gone anyway, but with that date, much appreciated. I can deal with that. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. I don't believe we had any motions.
I'll move to approve.
Second. Sorry, go ahead.
Steve, and then...
I think Melissa maybe.
Okay. Discussion. Seeing none, council, please vote. And that is approved, which takes us to C, ordinance number 1059, 2024, 2025, and ordinance amending Chapter 63 Speed Regulations of the City Code to make necessary changes on Sixth Street. First reading.
Move to approve.
I'll second.
Jason. Discussion.
I just had a... I've had quite a few people come up and talk to me about this specifically in that and the stop sign. So my question would be, what brought on both of them? I think that's a lot of questions that people are having, is why do we need both the speed limit and the stop sign? And kind of maybe what went into that decision to have those both there?
So as far as the stop sign, we've seen five accidents in 2024, we did 2023. Granted, there's one accident in 2023, there's been five in 2024. Whether that's associated with the flyover and S14 closure, or whether it's coincidence, you're seeing more accidents at that location for six and E. So trying to regulate the traffic, so the east-west traffic isn't trying to dart across when they don't have proper clearance was the justification for the stop sign. And then knowing that we're increasing the residential footprint from E to I with the long-term care being renovated and having additional housing. Everything from E to I is all residential. Majority of the city has a 25 mile an hour speed limit on residential. If we stop them at E and then have them accelerate to 35 and go down to a stop sign five blocks away, it's almost like you're encouraging higher acceleration. 25 is more consistent with the residential area.
That's a great explanation. Thank you.
Other discussion?
When we put this out there, is there any way maybe Marlaus can publish something about the explanation behind it, just so that info's out there?
Yeah, we can definitely have her put some information out there. Chris, can you meet with her tomorrow and update that?
People made it...
Make it a reel. Say what you just said again.
It's a great explanation. It makes complete sense when you explain it that way, so thank you.
Anything else? Seeing none, council, please vote. Okay, that is approved, taking us to D, HR Green Work Order for Annual Renewal for GIS Services.
Move to approve that.
Second. Steve, Henry, discussion. Seeing none, council, please vote. That is approved, takes us to E, Approved Change Order Number 5 for Waste Water Treatment Facility Improvements Phase 2 from WBCI Incorporated in the amount of $182,532.
Move to approve.
Second.
Dane, Melissa, session. Seeing none, council, please vote. That is approved, taking us to F, Approved Pay Request Number 27 for Waste Water Treatment Facility Improvements Phase 3 from Boomerang Corporation, amount of $416,549.10.
Move to approve.
Second.
Jason, Sandy, discussion there. Seeing none, council, please vote. That's approved, takes us to G, Approved Pay Request Number 3 for HMA Overlay Project FNG Street Rehabilitation from Inroads, amount of $134,125.51.
Move to approve.
Second. Melissa and Henry, discussion.
What... I think folks in that area of town are a little frustrated with this whole project. Do we know, like, what is taking them so long?
Some of the rain issues, but really it comes down to the sub-aggregate that we had on there. We had to get everything resur... surveyed for it, because when we pulled everything up, there wasn't any concrete when previously we thought there was. So we had to basically harden the subsurface so we could put the asphalt down. The rain hasn't really helped anything either. It's delayed several projects for us. But those are the main issues. Some of the other change orders with the pipes that we've included on it has increased it a little bit, but the pipes that we installed really, I would say that was probably three to five days that that increased it.
Yeah.
So mainly it was due to the subbase that was there, which has caused a significant delay in it.
So all last week, when it was beautiful and perfect outdoor working weather, and I didn't see a damn truck rolling. From WHKS?
It would have been Inroads. Yeah.
Who's in charge of the job?
WHKS is...
Yeah. Yeah. That's...
They were supposed to be out on Thursday and Friday prepping for this week. I don't disagree that they should have had it prepping earlier. And I did actually bring that up to Ryan last week. I don't know why they're not doing it earlier. Because like you, I've also noticed that there haven't been a lot of...
Beautiful days, Friday.
Do we have any options in the contract?
No.
Yeah, I figured they're within their time still.
Yep.
You're leaning on them.
Yeah. And have we updated any communication to residents? I know I heard a couple people that were talking about a letter they received.
Yeah. As soon as I send out a letter or deliver it, it always changes. So the plan was for Thursday and Friday for prep, Monday for final prep, Tuesday, Wednesday to do layers of asphalt, and clearly they haven't been here since a couple weeks ago, so I've got my steps in, but the accuracy of it is always changed as soon as I deliver it, so I can only do so much. I can't grab their hands and bring it here.
All right.
Anything else on that item? We had the motion, correct?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay. And council, please vote. That is approved, takes us to H, Approved Pay Request 4 from H to I Group for gym equipment at Fieldhouse in the amount of $4,241.
Easy.
Move to approve.
Second.
Jason.
So just so everybody's clear, this is padding for the walls. This is not actual exercise equipment.
Well, a sound dampening is a different item, but it's not exercise equipment.
Right.
Thank you for the clarity on that. Good point.
Oh, it looks like it's materials for sound padding, maybe? Or is that something different?
That should be in the...
Okay. Okay. Looks...
So holding on them until they came back and fixed a couple of issues. So H2I was a separate bidder for me, from Carroll Pike, and we did the project, so...
I think where the confusion came from was when you click on the link, it talks about the the padding.
Yeah.
In the same document.
Yeah, there would be wall padding as part of that too.
Okay. Okay, so we have the motion at the second. Any other discussion? Seeing none, council, please vote. That is approved, taking us to I, Approved Pay Request Number 4 from Construct for the 2024 Street Improvements Project in the amount of $440,615.23.
Move to approve. Second.
Sandy, Melissa, discussion. Seeing none, council, please vote. That is approved, taking us to J, Approved Change Order 1 from Construct for Harrington Park Stormwater Wetland SRF Sponsored Project in the amount of $17,900.
Move to approve.
Second. Dane, Henry, discussion.
So still following under the grant?
This was a change order that we made. I discussed it in my last... My last information that I sent over to you guys. They just didn't get it sent over to Karen until this week. So basically, this is an extension on the north side, clearing the grub and the trees that were invasive over there. I'd have to double-check to see if it's still within our grant, but I believe it is. Because that was something that we stressed throughout the whole entire project, was it needs to be lower than the amount that we received from the SRF.
Sure. Thank you.
Anything else? Seeing none, council, please vote. That is approved, taking us to K, Resolution Number 14, 2024, 2025, Resolution Approving Development Agreement between Camelot Theater Foundation and City of Nevada for IEDA-DTHG project.
Move to approve.
Second.
Jason, Dane, discussion.
Can't wait to see some lights on up in the apartments, not too far away.
Pretty nice.
Not too far away.
Won't be long.
Seeing no further discussion, council, please vote. That is approved, taking us to L, Resolution Number 15, 2024, 2025, Resolution Approving the Agreement to Pay User Increase in Waste Water Cost.
I'll move to approve.
Second.
Steve and Melissa, discussion.
Are we any further on a resolution for that?
We had a pretty good full day meeting, I think accomplished quite a bit. And now we're trading materials, so we've compiled most of ours. We were waiting for a couple things, pieces of feedback from consultants before we send a packet that way. So I think progress was made. There's probably hundreds of discussion points in total, so picking them off, but I would say yes, progress is made.
Moving the ball.
Moving is good.
Any other discussion there? Seeing none, council, please vote. That is approved, taking us into new business. So there's new business A, Discussion Appropriate Follow-Up Regarding Fieldhouse Sound Dampening. I think my children make too much noise at the play area, so they decided they needed to sound dampening.
Everybody makes too much noise in the play area. Well, first of all, we've been in the field house now for about, what, six months or so, so we've learned quite a bit. When we talked with RMH about sound dampening and in the facility, it was kind of let's wait and see, and see how it plays out, see how it sounds, and then we can add what we might need rather than... you know, over engineering something and that we don't need. So we have found over the past the past few months that the play area carrying into that concrete hallway um, tends to travel right into our offices and is quite loud and, and can, can disrupt work a little bit. So what's that?
Sorry.
Sometimes Dane, yeah, it's you guys do, but that's okay. Um, we've, we've dealt with it, but as we move into fall and winter and we have our first full year, I think that it's going to be really essential for us to have, have some sound dampening there to, uh, there's times when you can't even hear people talk window, through the window. It's just, it's just that loud, you know, and kids are going to scream and yell and that, that's, that's good. That's what the facility is for, but as we also know, we have to be able to work as well to be effective. So, um, as you all know, you could do a quick Google search and you could come up with lots of sound dampening options, okay? Um, a majority of those are cloth covered, which is not conducive for the environment in which we're putting those in, which would be, um, we need like the gymnasium style, that's the wood fiber and to find, to find that product. Um, you know, I had to go to the architect Jeff Harrison, ask him for some recommendations. He, he gave us Armstrong as a recommendation uh, first and what we were able to secure with Armstrong was kind of a report that gave us what they thought um, a wood fiber product um, with, with the two inch spacing. I mean, I've become a little bit of an acoustical um expert here over the last few, few months, but basically you need the, the spacing. It helps with reverberation time and the NRC and um, you know, so they calculated the number of panels that we might need to, to start with, which was at five hundred and sixty square foot. Sorry, I'm, I think that's what it is. And um, basically what that would be is seventy panels. So they're two by four by two panels. And um, seventy of those panels, we'd be able, they come, they come already fabricated. So they're going to have the furring on it and the wool in between. So basically what you're getting is a two inches over a two by four area. And um, so they'll be painted white is the goal, so that way they'll match the ceiling. And we'll have seventy of these panels and Jeff from RMH would come over and help us find out placement. Basically it's trial and error. We know we need some in the play area. We know we're going to need some in the hallways and we can also put some on the walls as well, so. But primarily they'll be on the ceiling and, and then a few on the walls. Um, so we'll, we'll place those panels up and um, hopefully that's, that's the goal is to get that RT reverberation time down and the NRC and evidently the NRC between the two products, we were able to compare um, at point eight five, the reverberation time is the same as well. So, um, essentially what we need to do is hopefully get these ordered and uh, make, make our life a little bit more manageable when all throughout the daytime, there's quite a few, few kids in, in that play area. So um, we did contact, like I said, Armstrong did the report. Um, did try some other Iowa contacts. Uh, they actually, one of the Iowa contacts sent us to a company and they don't uh, make those here in, here in Iowa, but to a company out of Colorado, but their manufacturing plant is in Ohio, so that's why you see that on the quote. Um, but it was Colorado that had the quote Cardinal Acoustics that was able to basically compare apples to apples with what Armstrong was, was doing. Certain teed had a product, but it didn't come put together, so we would have to do the furring strips, do the wool, place the stuff. So they're a lot more labor intensive. I just really didn't get a price on that, to be honest. Um, I thought we'd be better served with our staff putting up the panels all, all together as one come together and, and, and it'd be a lot simpler process for us, so. We were able to secure that, that quote for the forty-seven, forty-two oh two from Cardinal Acoustics. And like I said, that is um, an apple, apple comparison to the, to the Armstrong product. I don't know if anybody has any questions for me, but.
So this price is just for the panels? There's no installation will be.
Right, so our, our park staff will work together to, to install these. We'll have to purchase the, some screws and stuff like that locally, but it'll go directly into the concrete or directly into the walls.
I really appreciate you finding the second company that's almost half price.
Yeah, it, it was tough to find. I'm not gonna lie. It was tough to find. It was really good that uh, Jeff helped us locate some more local dealers and, and he actually emailed back and told us about, about Cardinal, so.
Nice job. We have motion on the cell?
No.
I'll make a motion to approve option one, the Cardinal Acoustics quote.
Second, Dane, discussion. Seeing none, council, please vote. That is approved. Glad it's getting used that much. Thanks, Rhonda.
Yep. What's that? I'm sorry.
Said us, I just said thanks and glad it's getting used that much.
Yeah, thank you. Appreciate it.
Um, so next is discussion appropriate follow-up regarding request ad no parking zones to certain narrow streets to permit fire department access.
Good evening. Um, some time ago, we had a fire call on Fifteenth Street Place uh, where we couldn't get the apparatus through because cars were parked on both sides of the road, Fifteenth Street Place. Uh, at that time, the council requested that we take a global perspective of the whole city and do it all at one time. Uh, we've done that. Um, if you look at our largest apparatus, our ladder truck is eleven point five feet wide. Most vehicles are six feet. So in any street that's less than twenty-four feet, it gives us six inches of clearance or three inches both sides. That's not driving lights and sirens at night uh, for a fire call. So we looked at some standards, the uh, fire code and, and the appendix D one oh five point two really recommends a street uh, width of twenty-six feet when you're operating a ladder truck. Uh, twenty-four feet is kind of the golden standard for us. We looked at the SUDAS standards and I've actually learned that the streets are narrower in residential areas, so people slow down. So um, that doesn't help in the current climate of wider fire trucks and stuff like that. So what we've done is we've looked at twenty-four feet is the minimum acceptable road width with single sided parking, so we're not. The only place we're doing away with parking altogether on either side of the road is uh, uh, five hundred block of E Avenue between fifth and sixth because of the truck route. Uh, pending truck route going on E Avenue and up Fifth Street and then that first uh, block of uh, Fifth Street from E North, so that semis can make the turn on Fifth Street rather than go up our main Sixth Street. I talked with uh, the street department in consulting on this and the public safety director and uh, everyone was in agreement. Where we tried where possible, we tried to make no parking on the hydrant side of the road so that we never have to worry about a car parked in front of the hydrant. Um, so you can see our narrowest street appears to be nineteen feet. And uh, we really went after uh, those sections of street where it was uh, under twenty-four feet. So we have seventeen recommendations for uh, limiting parking to one side only on the street, so. I'm, I'm sure somebody will be upset, but they just got to park on the other side of the street and walk the extra twenty feet. So. That's what I got.
Any, any questions from council?
Um. Most I, I have no, what?
Truck routes?
That's exactly where I was gonna go. Yeah, I feel like most of us I have the issue with. Like, my question is the truck route, uh, cause Fifth Street like you drive through there, the, and like if you're crossing, is, it's, I think it's H or G, like you cannot see around the corner. So it kind of concerns me having trucks and I don't know what the answer is because there's not a great answer either way, but Fifth Street worries me.
Yeah, I'll defer to my boss on this, but uh, uh, the understanding that we have is Fifth Street's a lot wider. Uh, we currently have no parking on the west side of Fifth Street, uh, I think for most of it. And then the only thing that we were looking at is adding that, that uh, five hundred block of Fifth Street so that they could make that turn. I don't, I don't know a better option personally. I think we, we've had the discussion about A Street, but then you're really taking them down a residential area. Um, really what would be perfect is when we get Maple figured out uh, that we do a lot of advertising to get trucks on Airport Road in the commercial area where they're designed for semis and less in that residential area, but every day I see a semi come up Sixth Street.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Working the pharmacy, same thing.
Yeah.
I know, like.
So that's probably a bigger staff discussion uh, about where, where this truck route goes since uh, S fourteen is shut down, but I can personally tell you the benefits of shutting down S fourteen versus figuring out this truck thing are, are pale in comparison because that's a pretty, that was a very deadly intersection for us.
And I don't have any issue with the parking, you know, restrictions because of that. My, my concern is those blind spots and, and the safety of people that are crossing Fifth Street with trucks coming down there.
I'll, I'll give that one to my boss.
I know right now we're just kind of throwing stop signs up everywhere and I don't know if that's an option or whatever, but you know.
In the coming weeks, you will see an action item or an action form for uh, new truck routes because that's something that we need to update and we did get approval from the DOT that we're allowed to move the S fourteen signage and some of the other things, so.
Okay.
Um, Joe and I have been working on truck routes and we just haven't gotten to updating that and putting it on a, on a forum.
Okay.
So you will be seeing that.
I would think, we talked earlier about communication with the four stop signs and all the different changes that are going on, and I would think this as we develop what the plan is, because it seems to, you know, what does this mean to me is where we hear from people and so that's already started.
Yeah, and I, I think it would be good to do some education on why these changes and you talking about.
Yeah, you talk to the people. Talk to the people at Fifteenth Street Place when their house is on fire. They'll, they'll give you an answer. When we had to drive all the way around. So yeah, I think it's very important we communicate that, but for us, it's the ability to get apparatus through anywhere in our community and, and that's our priority. So we'll make sure and work with those folks and Marla's to communicate that.
I think it's a great, it would be a great time to create one of those videos that we've done in the past and share on Facebook and our website as well.
Yeah, I think we were out there earlier. We put both vehicles parked on the road and that's parked legally. And it was, I mean, it wasn't that much on both sides of the mirror, let alone parked away from the curb where some people do, so. I think there's plenty of room on one side for all the neighborhood to park on and we'll just keep them away from the hydrants and it'll just solve a lot of problems with that as well. But yeah, that's a great idea.
So I, I do have a concern about the E Avenue from fifth to sixth. We're eliminating parking on both sides of the streets, um, not for fire truck access for a future truck route. Is that what I'm understanding?
Correct, yep.
I'm not entirely comfortable, I guess, with that because, you know, we're giving all the other residents an option to park on one side of the street, but within that block, there, there being I'd say penalized for a truck route that we haven't discussed yet, so I wonder if we could possibly approve these tonight. And then once we have fully determined our truck route, perhaps revisit that section there. Um, I'm kind of hesitant to go ahead and take an action on that. Pending future action that we don't know about yet. And there are concerns, you know, we all got the letter. There's concerns about that and I sympathize with that homeowner there. Not having anywhere to park in the street.
I agree.
So you're saying approve everything but sixteen and seventeen on the list?
Whole stuff, I think that's right.
Yeah, it was sixteen and seventeen is what you're talking about, Steve.
Yeah, that's where I'm kind of parked at the moment, so to speak.
I, I kind of agree with that. I mean, for the reasons you stated and also just for cleaning up messaging for when we explained why this is happening. This is for the fire department specifically, one through fifteen and then sixteen and seventeen can kind of be more comprehensive when we're talking about the truck route.
I'd feel better about that.
Yeah.
So since you don't have an ordinance, that mostly just direction.
Correct. Well, well, we'll bring it back and.
Yeah, because we don't have to. You don't actually have to. Form, it says approve, but we're not, don't even. Okay, so I think staff has necessary direction on that. So that will move us. We are. C, resolution number sixteen, twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five. Resolution to approve a memorandum of understanding between the City of Nevada, Iowa and the Public Professional and Maintenance Employees Local two, two thousand and three. I U P A T authorizing and directing signing of the MOU to the union contract.
Move to approve.
Second.
Jason, Henry. Discussion. Seeing none, council, please vote.
She can't grab it for some reason, but I see on the screen that the six votes for resolution number zero one six, they all voted yes.
Yeah, motion carries.
It's not letting her grab it.
So we will go to D, approve special class C retail alcohol license for Nevada J C's, D V A Nevada J C's and then the I Avenue effective August twenty-second, twenty twenty-four through August twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-four.
Move to approve.
Second.
Jason, Melissa. Seeing no discussion, council, please vote. That one is approved.
Yep.
Taking us to E, approve special class C retail alcohol license for Cloud Wine LLC, D V A Lucky Wife Wine Slushies Sixth Street effective September thirteenth, twenty twenty-four through September seventeen, twenty twenty-four.
Move to approve.
Second.
Steve, Dane. Seeing no discussion, council, please vote. That one is approved. Takes us to F, approve class B retail alcohol license for Dogon Corp LLC, D V A Dollar General Store one one five West Lincoln Highway, effective August thirteen, twenty twenty-four.
Move to approve. Second.
Sandy, Melissa. No discussion, council, please vote. That's approved. Takes us to G, approve class C retail alcohol license for Place Farms LLC, D V A TE Aldermen's one one three three Sixth Street, effective August thirteenth, twenty twenty-four.
Move to approve.
Second.
Melissa, Dane. I think we're all excited to see this one on here.
Very much so.
Absolutely.
Um. Seeing no discussion, council, please vote.
I'm more excited than Mark.
And that is approved. So that takes us to H, approve resolution number seventeen, twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five. Resolution declaring intent to provide economic development support to development project at one thousand five Sixth Street.
Move to approve.
Second.
Dane, Melissa, discussion. Seeing none, council, please vote.
Let me ask this real quick. Do we have enough people to approve this? You're abstaining? I'm on the grant committee, so I should probably abstain. Are you voting on? You're good on that one.
I'm good on that one.
Okay, all right. All right, we got enough people. Just checking.
Okay. You haven't voted? Can vote.
We got three plus the mayor, see?
Still a little skinny.
They actually have to vote.
And that is approved. Takes us to I, resolution number eighteen, twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five. Resolution setting the time and place to conduct a public hearing to consider the vacation of city property.
Move to approve. Move to approve.
Second.
Melissa, Dane.
Can you have the updated one on your screen? With the actual legal?
Saying no discussion, council, please vote. That is approved. Which takes us into reports, starting with city administrator.
All right, I know, so you have my report, other than that, we, I did meet with Mike Michaud with the Capstone Group to discuss. What he's planning on doing with the old hospital. Also talked with Dorsey and Whitney about an agreement to put in place, so they're drafting that for us. And spoke with Geo Tab, we're having some issues and there's some things that I didn't understand why we were getting. I guess. Remarks from the Geo Tab itself, and it was just some, something simple like sensors on a tire. Uh, had our LA, uh, Lincoln Highway Days meeting. Water plant tour out at our water plant with a engineering group. N E D C. Mayor Marla's and I were on an apt to G call, which is a, an app for. City use, but we figured out that it wasn't the right fit for City of Nevada. And we, Tim and I and Joe met with Country Landscapes to discuss tree placement for a grant that we're going to be applying for. And then we also went to the elementary school and provided updates on the school project. At a Main Street meeting and then today Emily, Ryan and I met with. Uh, Rod Curtis Architecture to discuss the C D B G project. Other than that, I'd be more than happy to answer any questions you may have.
Okay, so moving on, in reports, mostly gave the wastewater reports, so don't have anything to add to that unless you have questions there. Otherwise, um, the league, um, on a couple committees, one, the nominating committee for elections coming up for the league leadership, but. The Legislative Policy Committee and the league staff for government affairs is all turned over, so it's kind of an uncertain time there. Um, but they also had planned to be more proactive, which I do like. It's more similar to what I'm used to with the Pharmacy Association where they work through with membership, figuring out what are the things we want to be more proactive about. Which I think is probably a goo- good place for them to be, um, and I think that will, will help too, because there were some cities that felt like. They were dissatisfied with some of the outcomes last session, didn't feel like the league fought quite as hard as they should have for. For instance, some amendments to the property tax bill and things like that, so hopefully that will. They'll find some good staff and moving forward to next year, but that'd be my update from the league. Has any questions, happy to answer. Okay, council reports. Okay, we'll go back to staff, anything to add, Ray?
Lack of sound.
Well, I think all of us will appreciate it too.
The only thing we have to add is you have new monitors and all the things with sound and A V. I'm not sure if you noticed a difference or not, but hopefully you did. We don't hope to do this version of it long term, um, we need some work on the backend. Um, so I will, I will do my best to make sure that gets going. But yeah. Hopefully you'll be voting on the monitors because they're touchscreen and we can see it that way.
We also will be removing these two televisions, there'll be another one of that size back in that corner that. For all of you to review it, yep, so you don't have to turn. But we currently do not have a, an outlet there, so we'll need to get that installed before we can put the television on.
Much better.
And on that too, if you're changing, so for the public online, do you have to manually change the camera views? Is it smart enough to know where people are?
Follow, like the owl did.
Yeah, so you have, so like it's almost at the podium, you have to change it so people online can see.
He did tell us that when they come back to do training, hopefully he can manipulate it to do it. Like, like the owl did.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
That'd be good.
But we can change it from here too.
Okay. Awesome. Hopefully that'll help folks follow along online. Okay, Karen, anything from you? Aaron? Council, anything before we adjourn?
I'll move to adjourn.
And Jason, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed, please say nay. Passes, I know a couple of you were going to stick around. Is it Dana and Jason?
What did I get wrangled into this time?